Good evening and welcome to the October eighth, two thousand and twenty four work session for the mayor and city council for the city of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have Hagerstown Warthogs presentation as they waited so patiently in the hallway. Apologies to anyone listening online of a late start. Um, but with us, we have Mr. James. Oh, my goodness, I'm gonna tear that last name up. Meener. Minyei and Mr. Sean Perry. Join us at the table. And will you be bringing your coach up as well? Eric. And also Coach Eric Stubbs. Um, you can. This chair and drag it over. Coach.
One of the best basketball families in this state.
I agree. That's why I called him out. I said I was.
He knows North High.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council for having us. Uh, my name is Sean Perry and my partner, James Minyei. We were representing the Hagerstown Warthogs.
Yes, thank you for having us. All right, so a little history of of the team's been around about six seasons now. Uh, formerly the Hub City Hogs. Uh, it was historically a semi-professional team. I was the medic for the team for two seasons, and that's how I got involved with the team. Uh, and then I found out the team folded spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, I ran into one of the coaches and he like, kind of, we're joking. I said, hey, you know, is they gonna sell the team? And so that's how we ended up getting the team. I approached Sean and said, hey. Um, both of us have a lifelong history of serving the country and community. Uh, we wanted to use this as a method of giving back to the community and providing community service. So that's, that's where we started and we're maintaining those values as we go along and progress and, you know, gain traction and become more popular. So here's our, me and Sean, owners of the team. Um, I'm also serve as the general manager for the team as well. So a little history of me, uh, retired Army Combat Veteran, uh, retired Air Interdiction Agent with Customs and Border Protection. Currently a paramedic here with the Community Rescue Service in town. And Sean, Army Veteran as well, retired lieutenant from Frederick Police Department. Um, so we've, we've both spent, you know, quite a few years and careers, you know, serving the country and serving the community. And, you know, now we're serving in a different method to support the community. And so we've got a quick little video. Said he was gonna do it.
I feel like I'm losing my mind. Is everybody in the world blind? Please, Lord, give me a sign, a sign. I feel like I'm losing my mind. Is everybody in the world blind? Please, Lord, give me a sign, a sign. I wanna be the greatest. Everybody on their fake shit. I look around and feel like everybody is the fakers. I make this every day and I'm impatient, hoping one day I blow up on the basement. Statement, the top is so vacant. I don't hear shit that I think is amazing. Waiting for my day when I'm playing sold out shows for a thousand faces, ay! Give me that crown, getting my way in to be put down. Hitting your place, I'll diss my town. If I want that shit, then I'll get it right now. I'm losing it, the news if it's some loser shit, it's stupid, man, if you choose. I feel like I'm losing my mind. Is everybody in the world blind? Please, Lord, give me a sign, a sign. I feel like I'm losing my mind. Is everybody in the world blind? Please, Lord, give me a sign, a sign. I wanna be the greatest. Everybody on their fake shit. I look around and feel like everybody is the fakers. I make this every day and I'm impatient, hoping one day I blow up on the basement. Statement, the top is so vacant. I don't hear shit that I think is amazing. Waiting for my day.
Current look at our coaches. Head coach Eric Stubbs here. Uh, huge basketball in the community here. He's involved with, you name it, basketball in Hagerstown and, and Coach Stubbs is, is involved somehow. We are so happy to have him. He's running a tight ship this year and we're really excited where we're headed. And we also have a basketball legend assistant coach, Hugh Jones. Baby Shack, um, played in street basketball in N one leagues back.
Guys, we're familiar with basketball and knew the N one league. Uh, Baby Shack was part of that when they were.
Yeah, so he brings, as we get further in this briefing, I'll, you'll see why he's kind of gonna be an instrumental part in where we're headed in the future. All right, so I apologize, I apologize to you guys back here as well. We have not taken our season picture yet, so this is last year's picture, but I just wanted to put something up here, you know, to show our team picture. So this was the season last year. Team that we had, so based off of everything that's been going on with last season and where we're heading. We had a huge turnout for tryouts this year. Uh, we have some excellent talent that we're excited to, you know, show the city and, you know, who we are and that we're a professional team. All right, so we have our staff. We also are a nonprofit. We're still working with the IRS to get it approved. Um, but here's our coaches, our board members. Um, Donna Mills is here with us today. Um, Coach Hope Covert over here. Um, and Coach Stubbs.
To get back on the nonprofit status. Um, when James tricked me into getting his basketball team with him last year, honestly, um, we, we didn't know what we're doing, to be honest. And we, we started our nonprofit with that. And over the last year, we've met people, they've taught us more. So we reorganized and I reorganizing our nonprofit to be more of a, um, a foundation. And that's gonna be the foundation that's gonna support our youth with our camps and things like that. And that's still, it should be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks and we'll be good to go with that.
All right, so we currently have two leagues we're in right now. So we're getting ready to start November second with our first game in the V League season. So that'll run November to April. We also, so historically, the Street Basketball Association was around from two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven. Uh, very popular, same with the N one. They kind of rivaled each other for quite a few years as a street ball, a street basketball league, uh, professional league. So it's kind of the pinnacle of, you know, unfortunately, not everybody can make it into the NBA. This is kind of the pinnacle if you don't. Uh, so you have the NBA, the G League and the Street Basketball Association. So, Street Basketball Association was around till two thousand and eleven. They're rebirthing the league next year, uh, summer from April to about July, August timeframe. So we'll have an almost, almost year-round program, uh, between the V League and the Street Basketball Association. We also partnered with Streetball the Pro. Um, they do. Uh, pretty much a summertime tour. Uh, this summer, they were in Seattle, New York City, and, and they did go international to the UK. So what this partnership provides is an avenue of players to be chosen to go on this tour. And the Streetball the Pro guys bring in international teams and scouts and coaches to pick players up to go play overseas. So that's kind of the stepping stone that we provide. Further, furthering your career in basketball from this level is overseas, um, get international playtime. Um, and also the Street Basketball Association is kind of another step up. So we have all of these things going on. So the design of what we wanted to do is, we wanted to set ourselves apart from every other semi-pro team, every other league around here. We wanted to offer something that players would want to come to us to be able to further their basketball career. And in the progress, in the process of that, you know, we're putting on a good show, we're putting on a good product, a good family environment at our games to promote our local pro team here. We also do some community outreach. Um, these photos, uh, on the left is, hi Sean, we did a little thing with the YMCA. They were holding a meeting and. To keep the kids active while all the parents were in this meeting, we, uh, just shot some hoops with them, had a good time. The one on the right is a Fellowship of Christian Athletes. They invited us out to go do a little summer camp back in June with them. Um, they ended up wanting us to come back for a second day. And at the end of the first day, the kids were walking out of the gym yelling, let's go Warthogs. It was a really great, great environment. And our player sitting on the floor in that picture, Elijah Calhoun, he's gonna be heading up our youth clinics, which start next week. So here's our clinics. Uh, we're gonna run eight-week sessions, three days a week. I'm offering professional basketball instruction for the youth. Um, so with the nonprofit, this is where the nonprofit's gonna tie in. We wanna try to get fifty percent of attendees to our clinics and camps on scholarship through, through the nonprofit. So we're gonna try to work with the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club to, um, facilitate giving us people that normally wouldn't be afforded this opportunity to get this kind of instruction. Um, and that way we can mentor the youth in the community through positive male mentorship through basketball to the youth in this community. And hopefully making them productive adults as we move forward. Um, we're also working on a partnership with the head coaches of HCC to provide an avenue of, you know, we mentor these kids up through high school. And hopefully we can send them off into HCC to get an education, play on the HCC Hawks and move forward. And the goal is, you know, for them to circle back around and come back to us eventually and, and give outreach to the community along with us. So venue, we're currently at the old Goretty Gym, which is, the YMCA is, uh, in control of leasing. Um, so we're gonna be there this, this current season. I've been in talks with the regional GM of the Hagerstown Fieldhouse, uh, but I have yet to talk to the local GM yet to, to see what kind of, um, deal we can work out with them.
They just opened their office.
Councilman, Tony just told us that, so that's good to know.
So my initial looks online of what the inside basketball court area looks like, it doesn't look like there's any areas for stands. So if that's the case, then I don't know if that's gonna be a good facility for us. Um, but currently we're, we have a good working relationship with the YMCA and it's a really, it's a really nice facility. But it would be nice to be able to call, you know, the new field house, our home. And looking forward to a relationship with the field house and hopefully getting something worked out with them. All right, we have some success stories. Just in the last, myself and Sean have been, uh, owners of the team since July of last year. Since then, we've, since July of last year, we've got Taishan Hannah, our number ten. Uh, he went, got selected to go on tour with the Streetball the Pro. Um, he was also selected to go play in Mexico, but he went to the Streetball the Pro Tour instead of going to Mexico. And he is currently, he left yesterday to go to play in Peru. So he left yesterday to go play in Peru. He's gonna be back with us the end of December and January to finish the season with us. So he's doing a little overseas tour. Um, excellent player, glad to have him. Sad to see him go, but thankfully he's coming back. He's still calling Hagerstown home and the Warthogs is home team, so. Uh, Antoine Carter, who is here, number eight. Antoine, he also got picked up to go play in Mexico. Um, and Jamal, Jamal Bland. He, uh, he got chosen to go play in Mexico, but unfortunately he wasn't able to go. So just in. So just in the short year, we've already had success stories of providing players opportunities to move on in their professional careers. All right, so what we're looking at for our future, we've actually had. Quite a busy last week or so, even since making these slides of, I have had to write stuff down to add to this. Um, so like we talked about, the Warthogs Foundation. Basically what we're waiting on for IRS approval is changing the name of it. Um, we're changing it to Warthogs Foundation. They didn't want the old name to conflict with the business side. Um, so with, so with that, of all people, my barber up in Smithsburg, uh, suggested this idea and I said I'm stealing it. Um, he said, have you heard of the Girls Inc. Downtown? And I'm like, yeah, I've heard of them. And he kind of told me about them and how his daughter would go there and, uh, you know, have access to what they provide. So with providing coats and shoes and clothing and snacks and food to, to kids that need it. And also, you know, non-perishable food items to take home to make for dinner. Um, and somebody told me yesterday that there's nine hundred youth in the city or the county, I wasn't sure which, that are classified as homeless. Um, so what we, what we wanna do is mirror what Girls Inc. is doing, but centering it around basketball. And he says, call it the rebound club. And I said, I'm stealing it. Um, so I think through basketball and all our players are under contract. They have to do fifty percent of all of our community activities that we have throughout the season. Um, and that's part of the contract they have to, and most of them do a very good job at going to all of them. Especially Antoine, as long as he gets a snack. So once we get established as a five-on-one, C-three, that's something that we're gonna look, look to start doing. Cause I think we could really make a huge impact on the community with the youth. Um, hopefully, you know, wherever we can get this located at has, you know, like a basketball court access or something. And, you know, guys can come out and, you know, just play around, play some hoops with the kids. And then providing a service as well as needed, needed, um, clothing and food for this, for the youth. Um, we're having tryouts, uh, I think in about two weeks for the Warthogs Dance Team. It's gonna be an adult dance team. Um, brought on then the Thunderbolts. Uh, we're gonna. So, so it used to be the Hub City Hogs, so I wanted something that tied us to Hagerstown. So with the building in the past of the HM Warthog airplane, um, I went with the Warthogs. Um, so the theme was, you know, centered around that. It was about the same time they were picking the boxcar. So I made sure it wasn't on their list of, of, uh, for voting for the name of the boxcars. Um, so that's, that's the theme we're going with. Um, the Warthogs Dance Team, the nickname for the HM Warthog is the Thunderbolt, so the dance team's gonna be the Thunderbolts.
And it relies into our veteran status.
Yes.
So it all worked out for, for us when it came to the name.
Um, and if anybody's familiar with the HM Warthog, it makes a very distinct, cool sound when it fires its gun. And that's gonna be debuted at our, uh, first game in November. Uh, it's, we're gonna use that for, you know, when somebody does a dunk, you know, we're gonna play that sound. It's kind of gonna be a, a theme we're gonna run. Hopefully rolling out Haggy the Warthog here soon, based off of city of Hagerstown. Haggy the Warthog, yeah, so Warthog, uh, outfit, wearing a jersey. So we're, we're, we're working towards that. We'll hopefully have it rolled out next month. Um, so with our theme of, you know, family-friendly environment, the product that we're trying to put out. Uh, we started doing it last year. We brought in youth twirling teams to do halftime shows. Um, we had a competitive youth cheer team coming out, um, but they'd ended up not being able to make it. So we're, we're incorporating the youth into our show, so it's a family-friendly, entertaining environment that people wanna come back to. Um, what we're promoting here today is, we're Hagerstown's professional basketball team. And we wanna represent the city and we wanna put on a good professional product. And it all starts with these guys back here. These guys are amazing. You're gonna see an awesome display of skill that we have going on this year. Um, so with the, with being in the Street Basketball Association, um, they are partnering with a author, Manswell T. Peterson. He is going to be doing a tour and us being the first team in the league, um, I'm making sure that we're gonna get on his tour. So with this tour, reading is lit. They are gonna be providing, um, with this tour, I don't have all the details yet, but he's gonna be providing a thousand free downloads through Amazon for the youth. And Amazon also either matched it or increased it, so an additional thousand or more free downloads for the youth in the community with this tour. So we're hoping to get that on the schedule, hopefully next year. Um, so Warthogs Foundation membership, we're gonna, you know, offer free t-shirts, newsletters, um, exclusive access to players after the game. Uh, as a perk for being a member of the Warthogs Foundation. Uh, so just this week, we got approached by, uh, one oh three seven. Um, they did the podcast for Flying Box Cars, a weekly podcast with hosting owners and players and, and all that. Um, so we're working on something like that with either of them or another radio station. We kind of, all of them got me in meetings this week to talk about it. Um, so it'll be, you know, the team podcast for the community, so we're real excited about that. I just had a meeting this morning and there's a new up-and-coming TV app called Red Coral, similar to like what YouTube does. And, uh, if you're familiar with the flying book, the Flying Cows down in Frederick, they're already on this app. It's an ability to upload your games and people can watch. It's not a live stream, so it takes a few days to, you know, edit the video and get it on, uploaded into the, into the app. But within a few days, you'll be able to watch the game from home. Uh, so people that couldn't make it out to the game, you can see the game on this new app. Um, so we're real excited about that and it's actually free. So I love that. So we're hoping to get that going here, uh, which gives, which gives our guys more visibility too. People will be able to see, uh, I mean, this, this is international, nationwide, uh, ability to use this app. And so our big event that we're hosting is a kickoff for the Street Basketball Association Rebirth, um, on November ninth and tenth. We're hosting America's Next Street Ball Star. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do a youth clinic with headliners Baby Shack and, um, Street Basketball White Chocolate. His name is Randy Gill. He's actually from Boonsboro. So those are gonna be our headliners, they're gonna come up here. We're gonna have an open run after the clinic. Uh, people will come in, pay ten dollars, put on a show for the two captains of the team, Baby Shack and White Chocolate. They're gonna choose teams to play against each other on November tenth. So we're gonna have a doubleheader on the tenth. America's Next Street Ball Star, that game, those two, two captains, they're also playing as well, uh, in the game. And then we're having a Warthogs against the Philly Tomahawks after that, so it'll be a doubleheader. But with this, we're gonna name, uh, best player, America's Next Street Ball Star. Kind of kick off the Street Basketball Association League coming back next year. Um, and we're also gonna do a runner-up as well. So that's where we're headed.
Nice.
Uh, if you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
Um, well, one, thank you both for your service. And I follow your, uh, Hagerstown Warthogs Facebook page and I saw the call to action to have everyone come here today. So clearly have the support, so that's good. Um, and for those watching, follow their Facebook page, uh, for more information. And I suggest our downtown Hagerstown page to also board or, or share, um, your schedule and highlights, so.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I know Sean, you and I have kind of briefly spoken about Envy and the Crossroads Basketball Team with Mr. Morrow. So, um, hopefully there's a connection that can still take place.
Definitely, definitely.
Everything that you do, we do, ours are just smaller people, so.
And, uh, James and I would love to meet with you guys soon as we can.
For sure.
Right now, I'm completely retired right now, so right now is a good time to catch you.
I get it, I'm about to retire. Forty-eight days. Three episodes, three episodes left.
So I'm curious about the leagues, uh, and who you play. Um, you know, where the teams are from, who they are, how many there are, that kind of thing.
So currently, right now, with the V League starting in November, we pretty much range from, the league goes from the north, most north is, there's two teams in Philly. Um, there's two Baltimore teams, the DC team, Savannah, Virginia, Savannah, Atlanta. Yes. Um, so thankfully they didn't make us go all the way down to Savannah, Atlanta this year. Um, we're actually meeting them for, um, like a Christmas tournament. In, uh, in Virginia, so we don't have to travel all the way down there, thankfully. But, um, so, yeah, we're looking at, pretty much from Philly to Savannah is, is this league. Street Basketball Association, um, it's, we only have three teams in it right now. Um, we're actively recruiting, but that's gonna be nationwide. And then at the end of the, the season with them, they pick an all-star team, which does national tour and international tour. When they were back in, when they were around before, they would go to the UK, they would do tours in Africa, Japan. Um, so it's an international opportunity. For these guys to get seen out there as well.
Do you have your practice at North Streets Gym, Martin with Kane?
So we have two practices a week. Um, we, we have kind of an in-kind sponsorship with, uh, One Life. So we do Wednesdays at One Life and then North, North Ave, we do Fridays.
Have you been in conversations with the county commissioners, I'm looking at Coach Stubbs, about upgrading the gym? It's been the same way since I went to.
I heard it's already been approved. I heard it's already approved to redo the floor.
Yeah, it is, I think it's next year.
And air conditioning?
That'd be great.
Well, you know, we are getting an indoor sports complex too, so hopefully there's something in there, there's like a really big space coming.
Eventually play in the sports complex. And what James didn't mention, the leagues, they have tournaments. And if we are, you know, we're bringing in a lot of people and, and we could sponsor that tournament. I would love us to host next year's championship here at the sport.
Yes.
I'm calling it the Taj Mahal, all right? Um, and to bring these teams from Savannah and, and, and wherever else to us as we host it as the city of Hagerstown.
Yeah, and I encourage you, if you haven't already, to reach out to Dan Spedden at Visit Hagerstown. So, you know, be a great connection for him. He does a very good job at putting national tournaments on. I think that this year we did BMX. Yeah, I think it was this year, the National BMX Championship was here in Hagerstown at the fairgrounds. And that was the, that was a Dan Spedden Visit Hagerstown initiative, so. Certainly a good connection.
Are your, uh, practices, are they open to the public or?
They are, there's not a lot of room.
There's not a lot of room at the North Ave.
And it's less, there's less, um.
Not much at One Life either. Yeah, we don't charge for anything, but show, I mean, they feel free to come and watch.
I tell you guys, having that practice, uh, when three secretaries, uh, from the governor's cabinet was here at, in a meeting at the community center, created a great presence, um, for that community. And also I know a couple came over and talked to you, um, or one of some of the staff, uh, talking to you. I just, that created, it, it created a great presence. And I know it wasn't like, um, you know, uh, uh, formed that way to kind of be there, but it was perfect timing. And whatever was happening at the gym and for those three, um, secretaries to be able to know that there was a, some activity going on, um, right up the street that consisted of, of sports, it was a good, good thing in you.
Do they set up any, I mean, cause when I think of street basketball, I think, you know, an outdoor, uh, you know, area type play. I'm just curious if you are aware if they set any other venues, uh, like the Boxcar Stadium, where they set up the court and play in that type of venue space.
Uh, so that was my first question when we got approached to, to join the league. Are we doing it outside? And the answer was no. So basically what sets, sets street basketball apart from, you know, like our season with the V League. It's a, it's more of basket containment than it is strict basketball rules. So we're looking for the showmanship, we're looking for the dunks, the alley-oops, the fancy dribbling. You know, it's a show, it's more of a show to show off these guys' skills and what they can produce on the court. So, um, I think with doing it outside, it's, you know, you're bringing. So I think with doing it outside, it's, you know, you're bringing a lot more difficulties with weather and, you know, being hot outside and, you know, worrying about fans out of the heat. Because you're looking at, you know, the hardest summers and majority of that season. And then being able to control the environment as well makes it a little bit more difficult. So we are going to be doing it inside for the street basketball as well.
As part of your outreach, I'm on the board for the Ruth Ben-Laros Summer Basketball League, which is held at Witten Park every summer. We host about 200 kids for free every year and the population there is about ranges from 500 to 1,000 people any Sunday. So with their outreach, I would love for you guys to to have a conversation with my board at the at the summer league to see if you guys can come out and talk to the kids. The age is is from eight to 18. I know some familiar faces that played at the league in the past, so yeah, let's let's link up.
Yes, just.
Eric's a coach.
Eric's a coach.
Yeah, he's a coach.
Every, every year. So yeah, let's link up.
Yes, definitely.
Wow. And something I forgot to add that we're trying to keep this a local team as much as we can. Like all of our guys on this roster this year are Hagerstown, Chambersburg, Martinsburg. I think we have one or two out of Charlestown. So we're keeping it our local talent and we're producing, you know, spectacular players just from local talent. And that's where we want to keep it.
Pressure's on Eric Duff to win his championship.
I mean, he knows like every player here.
I think that to be able, that the that folks know that you're here and and having this conversation is important. I also think that that our youth should be able to look at their heroes and be able to see them and be able to follow, you know, people that they're able to see, just like in our baseball and some other things. And so I appreciate the work that you do and specifically the coaches and and Coach Shack and and you, Eric, because we always talk about there's no one here doing anything. And we just know that not to be the case. And so my hope is that people see this and that other, some of my colleagues and and leaders, we get behind you. I mean, I've seen the call too and I was like, whoa, like that was awesome. But then when you came in, I was like, whoa, yeah. And I mean, that just speaks volumes, speaks volumes about the values and about the the leadership that is happening. A picture? Yeah. She kind of wants a picture.
Well, yeah, I think that we, you know, we can't do, I thought we would put you on Facebook.
We can both.
Yeah.
That was our goal is we just wanted awareness.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you guys come up here? And Jenny, we'll be right with you. We're so sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to stand on the chair. We're probably standing on the bottom. You guys just center around us on the stairs. Thank you for being here.
Would you leave all guys?
How are you?
Okay. Making friends, making.
Can we, can we get you to stand up one sentence? Maybe my. No, one, you're down. There we go. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Good smiles. One, two, three.
It's like.
Thank you. You want everything then?
Okay. Right, he's right on the screen.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. So we have library services to the downtown community and yeah, we'll be rude if you leave. And we have Jenny Vega, Executive Director from New Washington County.
Jenny, hi. Did you see her?
I know. I thought that was really fun. I'll be in contact.
Yeah, that's the executive director of.
Yeah, yeah. I'm making you my partner.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna have the magic.
Wes, you're all by yourself. It's just you now.
That's great. Beautiful too. Wonderful. Yeah, that's a hard act to follow. Beautiful face.
Right? They get that many people.
That's really cool.
I mean, that's.
You did say there's a lot of people.
Alright.
Great to see you. Oh, really?
So what I thought maybe just kind of the last thing that for you all to hear in in the series of conversations that you've had would be the library's impact on the downtown that relates to basically acting as a de facto day shelter for the downtown. And what Jenny and and Mary Byclon, I think, started it.
Absolutely.
And then Jenny has has taken it from there and really run with recognizing the fact that the library is is the safe place during the day for for many people. And thought to give you the opportunity to kind of of advertise what you're doing.
Yeah.
And then maybe celebrate some of the successes.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's it's awesome to be able to come and brag on on something that I care and have dedicated my life to. So thank you to you all for allowing me to come and talk to you. One of the things that when we talk about library service and we're talking about it kind of as an industry, we talk about it together as library directors around the state is that we're the last place you can go without the expectation of transaction. When you think about a place that you can go and you can spend time, you can go and spend time at a bookstore, but eventually you need to buy a cup of coffee or you need to buy a book. You can go and spend time at McDonald's, but eventually you're going to need to buy something or you're going to have to leave. We're pretty much the last place you can go and expect to be left alone. You can mind, as long as you're minding your business, we're happy that you're there and we're happy to provide the service. Over the last couple of years, something that we've seen within our community, especially after COVID, is the opportunity to work on the way that we respond to people. And we've been working through the practices of something that we call restorative practice. And it's the opportunity to understand that not everybody's in the same place in their life. I'm just going to read you a little bit of something here. Restorative practices are based on the idea of building a community where everyone respects each other. We try to connect with people and make them feel welcome. We start by showing all patrons dignity and respect. And that's a really big part of of what we do every day. I know that there was a big conversation recently with, that happened at the library with the Senator and some of our commissioners and we were talking about a lot of different issues that are happening within the city. And it's something that we're really proud to say that when it comes to our incidents over time. This is all information I have shared with them. Our incidents over time since fiscal year 19, so that would be July 1, 2018, to June 30 of 2019, compared to our most recent fiscal year, our incidents are down about 64%. So a total reduction of 739 incidents reported, and this is all around the spectrum, to incidents reported to 268. That's something we're really proud of and we really attribute to these restorative practices, meeting people where they are, trying to understand and trying to build people up. I will say that we've had to do a lot of work in increasing safety and security personnel in our downtown location. We went from a couple of part-time people to to a full-time manager who's wonderful, Mustache Johnson. If you've met her, she's incredible. Two part-time officers in a contract with Green Line Security. We did build a security office in our most visible space and have made sure all of our seating is in sight lines of staff. And we've utilized a lot of grants from the state to update security cameras to state of the art and fences around our property. Something we've been really proud of and yeah, I'm glad to be able to talk about it in a positive way. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know most of you all pretty well, so feel free to shoot them off.
I don't have any questions. I I just want to say that I think it was 2018, might have been 2019. There was some conversations and some dialogues that happened there. And Governor Hogan had given this area the opportunity and the finances to facilitate conversations around how and come up with legislation as a community around policing and handling our youth, right? And I just want to say that the library jumped straight in and it's like you could host these conversations here. And myself and Tracy with Community Mediation, we did that. We did that probably for almost a year. Just almost, I believe we got into our eighth month and it was 50 people in that room. And so I I just want to, I appreciate what the library has represented as we have maneuvered through with restorative practices and that kind of thing. But yeah, that was an amazing opportunity. I would love to be able to advocate for it again because we were so close.
Yeah, and we're starting to work on our, we're finishing up our strategic plan for 2025 through 2030 and doing more of those collaborative conversations are are a big part of that.
Yeah, thank you for that work that you guys are doing. It's very important.
Yeah.
Jenny, I think Councilwoman Perini was there too. We went to a Main Street meeting and there was a one of the business owners downtown that is very close to the library was concerned about what was happening outside.
Sure.
And that the visibility of of whatever, how how does the security work for the outside of the building?
Well, we have, we have a pretty bright yellow line around the front of the building. And based on conversations with HPD, and I hope I'm remembering this correctly, but based on conversations, anything on that side of the yellow line is City of Hagerstown. We take care of the other side of the yellow line, which are, which is our property. We're in constant conversation with your police department regarding lording laws and and different things like that. Our staff does a really good job of making sure that our porch is pretty clear. And if you haven't been past our porch in the past year or so, we installed a lot of new lights. It's very, very bright on that porch now, so it didn't used to be.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, you know, libraries, when I was younger, that's not what it looked like. You know, it's it's certainly changed and evolved into, you know.
It has. And I mean, we do a lot of work. I mean, we're constantly trying to find different places to, different people to work with. We have the past couple of years worked with University, Frostburg University, and having a social work intern to connect with people. We're working with the CAC to potentially have some of their staff come in and work with us as well. It's 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 all of the time and I know we talked about it. It is a de facto shelter for a lot of people and we're thankful to be able to provide a space to people. But I'm sure you won't find it surprising for me to say it's not enough. It's not, it's not the answer that the city really needs. We do need more help for people. And I don't want to beat that drum because I know you hear it all of the time, but it is something we do need to see more of. We do our best with what we have.
Thank you, the library.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we have very competent and and wonderful staff, but none of, none of us went to school for this. And so we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Councilwoman Burnett usually asks this, but I'm going to ask, what can we do? Was this like the body to?
That's a really great question. I understand that the 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 true solution is is a lot more than one entity can do, which is to have spaces for people that they can be in and they can experience a non-judgmental space, a safe space for themselves. You know, in an ideal world, as just a person who works in this community, I would love to see a a day shelter exist for members of this community. That's not just cold weather. I think that would be an incredible asset to this community. But again, I know that's a big conversation that a lot of people have had. And I don't think that that's necessarily just a City of Hagerstown solution.
You mentioned the the meeting that we attended at the library some weeks back.
Yeah.
At the call of the Senator, where some of us obviously weren't invited, but we attended anyway. And it was a fairly lengthy meeting, probably longer than we had anticipated.
Yeah.
Not the one where the public came, but the one before that where we met in the private room.
Sure.
And it's, you know, it's more common that I hear this phrase of you meet people where they are and you know, that you are this de facto location where people feel comfortable that don't have the ability to find comfort to simply be in any other environment. And I just remember leaving that meeting and I think you guys were closing.
Yeah.
And there were about five or six of you walking out the back and there's any number of us walking out the back and we're all going to our cars. And over to the right, there was this young couple and they were hanging their blankets on the fence. And and I stopped and I went over and I said, hey, what, 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 what's going on? And they said, we don't have anywhere to go. It was raining yesterday, you know, we had our stuff out and it's all wet. They were just trying to dry their clothes.
Yeah.
And like, man, there's a laundromat across the street. And it doesn't absolutely dawn on you that, yeah, the laundromat's there, but it's not accessible. You know, because, you know, there's a cost. And so I said, here, I got seven bucks in my wallet, so I got, you know, go dry your stuff. But I think it's that example where, you know, there was 20 of us that just sat in that room and talked about these exact things and all 20 of us just walked by like the issue doesn't exist, when all it took was, you know, asking the person, what is your need right this second? And it was just to dry a couple of blankets. So just that.
And that's what we try to do every day with with our patrons. I mean, again, when I talk about like we're the last place you can go without the expectation of of transaction and to quote a movie that I love and you should watch if you haven't seen it, The Public by Emilio Estevez. It's a really great story of the Columbus Public Library. And it's a fictionalized story, but talking about homelessness in their library. This is not a Hagerstown specific issue. This is an urban library issue. This is something we go to training for as librarians nationwide. This is a very common thing that we that we deal with.
But I think, I think that's our ask to you when Councilmember Burnett of the mayor says, hey, you know, what what can we do? It's really, you know, what are the three or four things that you see?
Yeah.
You know, are they legislative items that that you need from us? Are they, are they assistive items in terms of tangible things?
I mean, honestly.
We don't know that.
Yeah, honestly, what would be very helpful, you know, we've always loved when HPD has stopped in and given us a hand. We, our staff is always really thankful and grateful for when they do come in. I understand the limitations and for the most part, our staff is able to handle it, but it's always really nice to see. A vast majority of the individuals that come in that are experiencing homelessness do not cause us any issues. We deal with behaviors. We don't deal with life circumstances. So that's more of a behavioral deterrent. When it comes to assisting with members of our homeless community, I might have to get back to you on that. Again, it's just been something we've been dealing with for so long. I'm not entirely sure if I can give you something tangible to to help us with.
Well, thank you and the library for being that safe space for people because as. Because, uh, as we saw in the news recently with the hurricanes down south, libraries has been a staple in other communities as well with offering wifi and shelter. So, uh, I'm just supportive of all things library. I hope the nation understands that. It's a need.
Absolutely. Thank you. And it's, um, there's, if you go back and you read about some stuff that happened, Hurricane Sandy, um, Hurricane Isbell, when I was little, um, the libraries always open up first and we do our best to help. Yeah.
Thanks, Jenny.
Yeah.
Uh, so maybe this is not in reference to, but it kind of is. Last time you guys were here, um, I mentioned that, um, Hagerstown, Indiana has like the Library of Things. But another thing that they do is they kind of have like, that's their, that's their, their hub as well, right there across from Town Hall. And I remember you mentioned, you guys mentioning that you were looking into that. So just from.
Yeah, so we are, uh, we built the room. So if you come by the library, which I encourage any of you guys to come by at any time, it does look really different. We've been building spaces and we just got some new, um, some new furniture and, um, trying to create some new, um, some new seating spaces because we are constantly running out of seating. Um, and so the Library of Things room has been built and they're shelving up. We just haven't started the program. So I encourage you to come by. It's on the second floor.
Thank you for that idea.
Yeah.
Have you guys been in contact with the Hagerstown Indiana Library?
No, no, I don't think.
I think it would be great to connect you guys because I, I know from talking to Mr. Kiefer, you know, any way we can strengthen that sister city relationship would be great. And to the fact that we will both have that commonality.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I can definitely look into that. That's a good idea.
Yeah, that is a very good idea.
Yeah. But I will say, you know, just to, to end this on a really positive note, um, something that I'm really proud of in coming from a different state. And working in Virginia for a lot of my career, um, Maryland is considered library heaven. And that might sound a little bit of a hyperbole, but it really isn't. There are so many programs within the state of Maryland that are so beneficial to libraries. A lot of them were initiated by Mary Bycon, who we call the godfather of libraries, like no joke. She did an incredible job initiating, um, the fact that we have a capital grant program for libraries. That there's like three lib, three systems or three states in the entire country that require money be spent to build new libraries. It's not done. Um, we have requirements. We have programs for our staff to go through that are mini training academies that no other state does. Um, there's mandated increases for, uh, for personnel and for operations. A lot of states don't do that. It's an incredible place to work and Washington County being a part of that. I mean, it's, it's been absolutely eye-opening for me and I've, I've loved being here. I'm about to hit my five-year anniversary and I've loved being here. So.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful city. It's a wonderful library system, so. Leave it on a positive note.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. But I'll be in touch if I can think of.
Yeah, and if you think of, if you think of anything specifically with the mayor.
I think really just if, 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 if there is the capacity, and again, I understand that there's a lot being asked of the city police, um, right now. So if there is the capacity, just for more, more staff in, that would be helpful.
Sitting right there.
Hi.
That would be helpful. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Go in there and read, Captain.
Do I say this? I'm just. All right. We're going up next to legislation discussion follow-up, mayor and council members.
So. Start it. Um, last week, uh, the community coalition was in, um, we said that, uh, the October 9th is the date to put in the final blue sheets. Uh, there was definitely a support for the, uh, Public Safety Center. It is not a training center. It is a center for, uh, uh, a central location for HFD and HPD operations, uh, would house some engines, um, perhaps EMS, some other things, uh, to put in a, a site market analysis study, uh, funding for that. And then there were some others that were mentioned, uh, three others that were mentioned. One was the, uh, drug house ordinance. Uh, second was, uh, funding for state's attorney, uh, for the state's attorney's office, some positions there. And then lastly, the, uh, uh, the ability for when HPD does make an arrest and they send to the detention center that should there be a wound or, uh, uh, someone there under the influence, that that person would still be booked and then be taken care of, uh, once they were booked, uh, at the, but at the, the detention center. Instead of keeping the police officers from, you know, Hagerstown, Boonsborough, uh, Smithsboro, uh, with that patient, having to transport them back to the hospital and then having to take them back to the, uh, to, to the detention center. Um, tomorrow is when we've got to get those in. So this is kind of the last opportunity to, uh, make sure that we're putting in, uh, what you all would like to, uh, have addressed by the community coalition lobby.
So. I mean, we got the sheets, right? And it, it shows that these are, you know, city asks. And we had that discussion at length last week. Um, but the reality is this, uh, there are more than just the Hagerstown Police Department that operate within Washington County that transport individuals, uh, after arrest has been made to the detention center. We all agreed, uh, uh, some significant time ago, you know, to, to, uh, uh, coalesced around a central booking facility. Um, you know, I believe Smithsburg, Boonsborough, Hancock, right? They all have police departments. So it can sit there on a piece of paper and say it's the city, but that's really an ask to me of, of, you know, uh, the municipalities, uh, in entities that have those, um, operations. Um, and, you know, those, those are only going to extend over time. In other words, you know, municipalities as they grow are going to grow in that service delivery. So, you know, I think what, just a short time ago, it was just the city and then Hancock and then Smithsburg and then Boonsborough. So, you know, that's only going to grow. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we get it on the board, so to speak, if we don't, you know, proceed through that process because it, it is a county, you know, the, it is a, you know, Washington County, you know, item. It's not something that is a city item or that is a state item. We're going to the state.
And that's how it's, I, I, that's how it's explained when it's, when it's put in, that this isn't necessarily a city. It would involve all, including Sheriff's Department, I would assume, uh, would include all, uh, law enforcement agencies within the county.
And, and I got to tell you, you know, I don't know how we vet the things that other partners may or may not have an interest in, unless we put them before the partners to do so. In other words, that's part and parcel, I think, to this process. And so, um, the state's attorney issue, uh, obviously it would, uh, you know, benefit, uh, the citizens of Hagerstown, but that's, again, that's a county operation, so to speak, you know, or, or, or operation that's, that's, that's bigger than us. Um, that I don't know how else you get to the table from the individuals that, that are, you know, the state's attorney office isn't a partner in that coalition. Uh, it's an issue no differently than we would carry forward. You know, if we'd have heard from, uh, you know, a, a, a separate entity, um, on that. The, the, the third one, I, I'm not, not as sure about because, you know, we've been told time and time again that that isn't something we can do. So I don't know, you know, and it sounds to me, and I don't attend the coalition meetings, but it sounds to me like, you know, there are other parties at the coalition calling for that. You know, not us, because we've been pretty much told you can't do it. So, you know, if, if there are other parties at the coalition meetings that, that want it to happen, again, you can assign the city's name to it, but, um, that's not specific to the city. And if other parties at the coalition meetings want it to happen, then it should go on the list as a coalition item.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And that's how it would.
To me, the city's asking for one thing, specific to the city and the city only in this current coalition effort, and that's the public safety thing. And just, I'll say my two cents, and then I'm going to shut up. Whatever that request may be associated with that item, I don't want it to be pigeonholed into a single facility. It's my two senses is, it is hard as I've seen us look for the last five years for places for fire. I don't want it to get bogged down in, well, it's got to be all or nothing, meaning police and fire and EMS and everything has to go under that single house at that single location. Because that may not be what ends up happening at the end of the day in terms of space availability and location and, and, you know, how that department wants to operate, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm all for that being the city's ask. Um, I just want to make sure that, that it is conceptual, uh, as possible, uh, in nature at this time, you know, and, and doesn't put forth, um, the proposition that, that we're asking for this, you know, for these departments, it has to be at one spot.
Yeah, it's all at this spot.
Yeah, and that's my two cents.
Yeah, I know. Last week I was, I was hung up on the city, quote, city as a partner for, for items that will, not just the city, but county too. So I am, I'm changing my opinion. Um, I'm interested in, um, hopeful of the collaboration from the other entities to see how that moves forward. So if I can get back on the list, I'll be in support of it.
I also was not supportive of that tact when we talked about it last week. Rebrained, I think that it's appropriate since it's a community coalition, as a community ask. Um, I would only ask to, to add on to that, that if we can, to try to bring in those responsible parties as kind of maybe a carryover or next discussion point to continue the discussion is a follow-up whether, whether or not the coalition decides to pick up those items. But just to, to add one if we can, that would be my request.
I, I agree with that. You know, the next discussion is, you know, part and parcel, as you say, to more legislation, uh, discussion and what can be added to the list. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you had, if you had I-81 listed on the coalition sheet and it said it's a county ask, I mean, I wouldn't look at that and say it's a county ask, right?
Sure.
Look at it and say it's a Jim Kurtzblaster, you know what I mean?
Right.
Or somebody else in that midst brought it up. To me, this is a vetting process to see if the body as an entity wants to support the item as presented regardless of who brings it to the table.
And the way it'll show on this list is, let's use 81 for the example, the partner would be County Chamber of Commerce, GHC. But ultimately, if it's on this list, all of the partners advocate for it. So if this is something, we want to put something on the table, for example, uh, the, uh, the drug house, um, that would be applicable to the entire, to all municipalities within the county. Then we could put, you know, the city, Hagerstown, Weasport, county, uh, that can, because, you know, Sheriff's Department's going to be and would, I would hope be able to benefit from this as well. Uh, that's how that would show up on here. But once it's on this list, then it becomes a coalition group effort to advocate for.
But like GHC or Chamber of Commerce wouldn't be listed in the, as the entities. Is that the way?
They would be one of the entities based upon what their board of director, when they take this back to their board of directors, they vote on what they want to see, just like you all do, county does, whatever.
Okay. Again, I think the next discussion is.
All right, we're, we're ready to go? Oh, no.
No, so four.
No, I'm fine with what you're listing, you mentioned.
With four?
Yeah.
Okay.
The poor I have.
Yes.
All right. And so we have public safety discussion. And again, that's the mayor and council at the table. I also have Captain and Galley.
Basically, since August 13th, you all have had folks in here, in here, and I think there have been just some fascinating discussions that have been held, uh, and, and, uh, a lot of good information has been provided to, to you all, to staff, to the public, uh, based upon, uh, the events in July. I provided each of you a synopsis of, of, uh, each of the sessions that were had, thanks to, to Wes, uh, Wes Decker. And this is just an opportunity for you all to, uh, go over that. If anything, you know, uh, pops out that you would like to see, just as Councilman Oshair mentioned to, to Jenny, uh, that you would like staff to take action on, whether it be legislative, whether it be internal operation-wise, uh, whether it be through HPD, HFD, code enforcement, however you want to, uh, have that addressed. And what your next steps would be and what you'd like to see moving forward.
And I'll, I'll reiterate just to start with that I, I think it'd probably be appropriate for us to put a list together, maybe suggestions we've heard, thing, action items that could be taken, um, kind of by who can, who can effectuate them, right? Um, but I, I would like to see if we can make it happen, a follow-up meeting with our county partners and then a follow-up meeting with our state delegation. I, I think that'd be the most appropriate to address it directly with them at this table, uh, what we've come out of this.
I could not agree more, Matt. I just feel as if, you know, the letter and while the letter is the letter, it really spurred conversations that were long overdue, you know, in, in the way that it happened, but for whatever reason. Um, and I think that it's only fair for us to, like, we have the, we have the information. We took the letter. We took it number by number. We addressed it with the people that do the work. And now we take it back to the Senator and say, okay, here's where we are. What do we do together? You know, it's not, we can't do it all. We can't fix it all and neither can each individual entity. But it's only fair to bring that to this table, the delegate and the Senator and whoever else, Derek Harvey, I don't care. You know, like, okay, like we're, we can't handle it all and neither, and, and we shouldn't, you know? So I think that while I have ideas that, you know, oh, monies, we can't just throw money at it. We can't just throw a day shelter up. We can't just throw a crisis center up. But there's little individual things that we can do and a lot of it is legislation that we are not in control of, that we can go down and advocate all day and testimonies and things like that. But a lot of the things that they were asking are really things that are in the power of our delegate and Senator to go down and, and help. So, I mean, we could talk all day about the things, these wish lists. I'm not trying to cut the conversation short by any means, but you know, there's, there's just things that I don't think that around this table within staff that we're able to really eliminate or, you know, make a lot of effect in. It's just my, although I do think that an NV program director would be really nice. That's the one thing, you know, that there's other things that we could do, but, you know, affordable housing, you know, we talked about that. You know, that would be something that the body could concentrate on over the next course of, you know, the administrations. But, you know, but most of it is really things that are not within the city's control.
I have that stored.
Thank you.
Just seen a creative way in order to, which is, uh, putting some things on the, you know, on the, on the, uh, oh my gosh, am I freezing up? The, for the legislative, um, committee, um, to go down and, and kind of advocate for. And maybe that's something else too, is to, um, have those meetings with the county or attempt to have the meetings with the delegate, the Senator and county commissioner, all the partners. And then, you know, seeing if we can't as a, come up with, you know, something as colleagues that we can then ask for together. Um, and I think, not, I think, I know that sometimes, um, in order for things to get better, there has to be an explosion. And I mean, the, the letter for me represented, um, the opportunity for difficult conversations to happen in a way where, you know, you don't take it up on offense. You don't take a side right away. You just hear all the information first. And I feel like we've done that. I feel like we've heard the information. We made sure the, the, um, the public has heard, uh, what, the same thing we could hear. And now I think that's the opportunity to take back the information, the data, the, the, um, and reframe, I liked the way you said that. and reframe, I liked the way you said that, because that's like a mediation, or to reframe, you know, how we have a conversation, like the conversation at the library with folks uninvited. I think that could be redone again, and, and produce great things from it.
Yeah, I mean, I can't stress enough how just, I mean, this is coming from a person, myself, who, I feel like I've been here for a long time, but just how insightful it was to hear from the state's attorney's office for probably the first time that I've ever sat there and had a conversation on sort of the nuts and bolts of our respective operations, and especially theirs, and, and how knowledgeable, and maybe experienced is probably the better word, the state's attorney was, and her staff was, and saying, here's what we do, you know, here's the nuts and bolts of how it works, and here's what we need. It was just so pointed, and, and the, you know, the chief and the sheriff, and, and the public safety folks sort of coming in and saying, you know, here's how we operate. It was just very plain. And, and especially, and probably most surprisingly, the folks that spoke to the operations of substance abuse housing, and how different, absolutely different, their perspectives on operations, or then sort of the perspective you read in, in, you know, just the, 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 the social media and rumor mill and, and community, you know, vibe in general. It was, it was just, it was, it was way different, and to be able to capture that and put it in and say, okay, you know, here are the couple of things that are at the top of their, you know, priority list to get done. And, and it was just a very sort of unassuming and non-presuming method to do that. And if we don't list those things out and push that ball forward now, you know, it'd just be a lot, yeah, it'd be, yeah.
Shame on us that we don't. Right.
Those respective, and, and you've established the relationships. You know, I think it's so much easier for us to sort of group them and identify them, and put them forward to the right parties, whether it be us or our respective counterparts at the county and state level, to say, hey, you know, you probably don't talk to these folks much, but, but here's what they need.
So, I took the liberty of writing just that down. So, I have a list of what was suggested from the meetings for what the city can do and what other entities can do. And most of these, we've already, we're already doing. So, I grouped them by each discussion, so, if you don't mind, I wanna.
No, we don't mind.
And this is also, thank you for doing that. I'm also secretary. But also, in support of a Scott's synopsis was really helpful too.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, for the August thirteenth, the community health discussion for the city, it was proposed or, or suggested to add lighting or other deterrents after being notified from the health department of the frequent areas of where needles were found during that exchange conversation. And also to place sharps containers in those areas for the city. And for the others, for the health department to notify the city of frequent areas, also the hotline for when needles are found were discussed, reaches versus change to clean up the needles, and the health department to provide training to them. And we can say, yeah, let's do that, you know, when I can see some of those. For the August twentieth, state slash judicial system conversation, like we mentioned earlier about lobbying the state, or lobbying for more staffing with the courthouse.
Yeah, let's do that.
Check, I put a check on that one. It was mentioned by the judge that Hub City Garage has provided parking for the jurors and staff, so we already have that, check. The quote, see something, say something. The city could promote more messaging due to the lack of witness cooperation. Body cam unit is also brought up, N D was brought up, already in, has that in place, but obviously need some personnel for N D.
Needs a thing, needs a person.
The public safety building, the site study for the city, check, you already mentioned that too. And then for the other entities, what they could do, the mental health court, cold water, cold weather shelter, and more available public transportation. And August twenty-seventh, public safety slash police conversation, the city, cameras, drones, watch center, already have that in place, increasing police salary. That was done by us as well, and to fund recruitment efforts such as billboards and ads, which we have done for the last four years. And also, to others, is continuing the task force initiatives between the sheriff, HPD, and state. September seventeenth, support groups conversation, educate for city, educate public on where services are available. I personally shared that on my council page, the homeless coalition guide, so I suggest everybody share that as well. Prioritize social issues, as in affordable housing. That's a big check, especially again with the rent cap conversation that I think we can put in place. Also here was, was discussed to lobby for legislation to break systemic cycles. That was brought up, wanted to highlight that. Also promote folk change the way we give. I know we have our signs up on the highway, but I think, since we put that in place, I don't think we mentioned that since, so, that was also brought up.
It becomes just something that you see, you know, you just like notice it there, you know, just becomes stapled.
Volunteer, city can do that. And also for the city to attend the C A P quarterly meetings, that was suggested. And for the other entities, to create an app for a list of services or resources, for increased funding and resources, and to collaborate with fellow agencies and nonprofits. The September twenty-fourth services in the Center for Poorer conversation, the city suggestion, or suggestion for the city was to join the social media and, and promote the D J S, Department of, Department of United Services, and the social services, social media pages, and share the information. And for the others, to stay located downtown to reach most in need and access to public transportation, to reinvest in the community for early prevention efforts and to address root causes. Foster homes and foster parents are needed, and for more mentor programs. October first, social services discussion we had last week, local oversight or coalition for sober houses, including the fire, state, local government inspectors, and M O U's was mentioned with the city of Frederick, with the last conversation. It was also suggested to use general funds towards treatment centers. And also, treatment center reinforcements for city, suggested items. And for others, this continued education of sober houses and treatment centers. Adolescent services are needed, and plans for when individuals are kicked out of patient treatment centers. And then today, from the library, HPD, to visit, and for others, we need day shelters and more resources. That's what I have.
Can you provide that to Donna?
Yeah.
That was very, very good, and I'm glad you just, you brought that back up, because just at the run for reentry on Saturday, there was a, a conversation about a person being released into one of the homes downtown, and then getting kicked out within three days. And he got kicked out because he wasn't active, actively using and needing active treatment services. And it was, so I, I believe that we need to have conversations with those providers or whoever oversees that, or, because now you have someone that got released from a state prison after having multiple sessions, to help him have a, make a plan about life when he comes home, and to get, go into a treatment facility or a house. Is being as confidential and as vague as I can, and still share this with the public and with you guys, because this is an issue. And for this place to receive the finances for someone to be there for thirty days, then kick them out, within just a few hours, he was gonna be sent back to prison because he no longer had an address. And so, just like that, from being kicked out, parole and probation. And if it had not been for some folks that care a lot about these folks, that would drive up from the city, he would've went back to prison. And now this, this person is at the, at one of our, at the mission, and doesn't know anything about Hagerstown. And so, I think that bringing that to you guys' attention was just something that, I just talk with folks that do not live here, but serve here, and are highly concerned about how that is happening with folks that they're providing the service on the inside to make sure that they're safe, and that they're, make sure that our community is safe, and then they get there and get treated in such a way. And it's absolutely heartbreaking. And so, we talk about the things that we can and can't do. I think that we need to be aware of, of, you know, some things that are happening that are just unrighteous and unjust.
Yeah, I think that the gentleman that spoke, Sean, right?
Sean Perry?
Yeah.
No, no.
I didn't know if I meant tonight.
No, no. Conversation. The one thing that resonated was.
From Frederick?
Yeah.
The devil's show.
Yeah.
But I mean, basically said, listen, if we're going to expect folks entering sober living places to be accountable, then the place that's providing that service should be accountable. And I just felt like that was part of his message, that, you know, so you need these things in place on the governmental side, you know, to ensure that there is that accountability of the places, you know, that are supposed to be providing services to folks that we want to be accountable within the community.
I agree, and I, I just want, real quick, I just wanna say, again, that's the perception of, look what Hagerstown has done, right? And so, I, I agree that it has to be put on that, but for it to be, this is Hagerstown, where there is a, there's people in the elected body that do this work, and it still is happening, it's because of Hagerstown. And so, I, I agree. However, it still gets, we, it still gets put out as Hagerstown, even though we have those conversations, so.
I'd be interested if there are other states that have regulation on, you know, sober living facilities or, you know, recovery houses. Because, you know, when the government comes in to, some of these are privately run, you know, so, are there other, you know, and as business owners, they're, they're like, mm-mm, you're not gonna tell me how to do these things. But yet, if there isn't a treatment plan in place, or, you know, once these individuals have gone through the recovery system, or if they don't, you know, they don't complete it, is there a plan? You know, are they being released into our community with no plan, much like you just said? And, and where is the, you know, where does the government step in to do those things? You know what I'm saying? So, I think that it would be interesting to see, and maybe through an M M L effort, if there are other states that are, you know, that have these kind of plans in place. Because some of the prisons don't, not in Maryland, but, you know, not in our area, but, just not a thing.
And I think one of the ways that our state was looking to help with where there's three prison facilities, and the secretary of Public Department of Corrections, was by providing these services. We have an M O U with the state of Maryland that no other state has, where mediators go on the inside and have confidential, you know, with the families that no part inside of the staff can be a part of it, so that there's no way to sabotage or anything like that for safety issues. The state of Maryland is the only state with that. And so, like, again, if you have these things and they're, they're put in place through the state to make sure that they're able to happen, and then it, it doesn't happen that way, under the letter of the law that comes from the state with the restorative practice in place, then where, how do we, you know, and those next, be able to address that?
I, I'd really like to see that be a big priority for us, because I, I know since the day I came in, in here, I've heard, I've heard it. And, like you said, like you said, Madam Mayor, the, the state takes extra care to try to set folks up for reentry for success. But, if, if sober living homes aren't living up to what they're supposed to be doing, we're setting these folks up for failure. And, and in turn, we're in net with folks on the street, because they don't have an exit, you know, they, they don't have any kind of a plan when they leave treatment, whether voluntarily or, or not, so.
So, will we also be in, considering forming that coalition that was suggested to help with?
I'd love to talk to Frederick to see exactly what it is they're doing.
Because they, they had, like Serenity representative said, there's an M O U to see at Frederick, and thanks to that M O U has helped weed out the quote-unquote bad players. But if that's something that we can add to the list of looking into further.
Well, and maybe what, going forward, is that we, you know, thank you very much for separating that list. That was, that's fantastic. So, it's like, city ability to change, and then do we have those meetings continuing, right? That what we were able to do in setting on different agendas, and then everything else, we, again, talk to the, the people that came in, and it's almost like a, you know, a roundtable discussion with the senator and the delegate, and say like, this is, this is stuff that we can't help with, what can, you know, how can we do this, and how can we support you? And are you willing to advocate for?
I think the delegation, the council, they have to be present.
That's great, I agree, I agree, but like.
If the other municipalities want to attend, I think that's even.
So, is that like a work session, or is that like another, you know, we're going to the library and we're doing another group meeting?
I, I personally would like to see, if, if they're amenable and they're willing, I'd like to see, to be able to bring them here to the table in, in a city council meeting, and to speak to them, and, and be plain and collaborative and see what we can work out. The same with the state delegation, and maybe it's, maybe it's two different dates, I don't know, but I'd, I'd like to see it from here.
For the two different entities, for the two different.
Section.
Right, right.
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 I mean, does that, is, I mean, because we're in an election season, and, or, you know, we're about ready to change administrations, is that, okay, I mean, do we have enough time to do all of that?
You don't have time to do that.
We don't have time to do it, but I think we can still have a discussion.
It continues with the next administration.
Whoever's gonna decide whether they wanna continue it or not?
Because we, I mean, we're, we're doing our due diligence by listening to the concerns and, and our citizens, so I think we should just tie it all up, and one nice bow and hand it over to whoever's elected.
I agree.
Same, yep. You're welcome, you're welcome.
What do you guys say?
I haven't seen any candidates yet that haven't said they wanna do that, you know what I mean? They don't wanna do that, you know what I mean?
Exactly, we're gonna, here's, yeah.
And it looks like there are five states that actually have regulations on sober houses.
What part of the country are they?
It is Massachusetts, Connecticut, California, Florida, and Arizona.
Very interesting, very interesting.
Massachusetts, Connecticut, Florida.
As opposed, as opposed to Maryland, that it's all voluntary.
Very.
And I would expect that to be the case in the other municipalities, or other states as well.
Okay.
Arizona actually shut down three hundred in the last year.
Good.
Wow.
Yeah. Wow. You, and Florida too, are you able to, like, give us, can you send that to us?
I could, yeah.
Please?
Yeah, that was just a quick goof.
And again, what M M L can, I mean, that's, every single county in Maryland has the same issue, right? We're all struggling with that, they have the same thing. So, to be an M M L priority could be very effective for the state, depending on what they look, depending on what the regulations look like, I suppose.
And I think, like, just, again, this is just my notes that I put together in this list. And most of, like, like I said, most of these things, we've already done, is already in motion, except for the sober houses, what we can do for that, affordable housing, and, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you didn't interrupt, I was getting ready to jump in, but you jumped first.
There, there's one thing I had, I appreciate, your list is more thorough than mine, but I had a list kind of broken up too. But one thing I had written down, I'm not sure. Um, but one thing I had written down, I'm not sure, Madam, I missed it, but if not, we should make note of it, is I've heard a couple of times from the law enforcement group, um, about what we can do to reverse some of the, of the items in the Justice Reinvestment Act. I've heard that a couple of times, and I think that that needs to be a conversation.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think we heard from a number of the entities on the different dates, um, their interest and attempts in reaching into the local education system and trying to impress upon, you know, the education system, they need to have some of their, uh, thoughts, uh, engaged in the youth population earlier and, uh, more present than they currently are. And I think the, you know, the DJS, um, uh, uh, discussion, uh, they seem to, to sort of hit on that item, uh, pretty heavily, and I think you mentioned that. And then, the state's attorney's office seemed to hit on that item, so.
And that is NV's, like, that is the entire program, and it's just, it's never had teeth in it for someone to be able to do it solely, to, to operate it solely, I mean, the, the blueprint is there, and DJS and DSS have been, have been partners in NV since the beginning. Um, so, getting a program director and however that looks from the city's perspective is crucial and, and has worked in, you know, throughout other states. So, um, it's definitely something that I think is necessary in order to do that prevention and intervention, reentry, all of the things. So, I'm hopeful that that can be something that's implemented in a future budget, for sure.
I mean, one thing's for sure is that it, it does, quote, take a village to address all these things, I mean, it's, it's not a, a city, you can do this by yourself.
Right, that's, that's actually was my thought also about the process. First of all, thank you for all of the comments that everybody's made about kinda what we've done, uh, and then the individual points that were mentioned. Um, my thoughts are more on kinda the bigger picture process, um, because putting what Councilman Alshire said a little bit differently, I am sure that all these agencies, departments, organizations, kinda all function, including the city, function in a silo. Um, so, we kinda broke those silos down and had those conversations, and I thought that was tremendous. A kind of a, thinking about the administrator's question, where do we go, you know, what's the next steps, where do we go from here? There are always things that any government can do and do more of and do better, no matter how great they are, and I think Hagerstown does a pretty fantastic job at a lot of things. We can always find ways to do thing, do more things and do things better. But it's not lost on me anyhow personally that, um, almost everything that was discussed, um, was technically out of the purview of this city, uh, government. Um, and that even came up, and Councilman Alshire, few, seems like a few hours ago, uh, talked about, uh, the legislative, uh, initiatives with the community coalition, and is this really a city thing? I think, um, you know, what we found is that, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna actually kinda personify this with James and Sean. This is my takeaway from the Warthogs. When nobody else stepped up, they stepped up. You know, they said, hey, we'll, we'll do this, we'll set up this foundation, we'll, we'll own this team. 'Cause I think the answer to the question of is, you know, if not us, who? Is no one. So, sometimes there are things that, from, from these discussions, that I feel like this city government can do, not that because it's our responsibility, not because it's something that we should've done and haven't done, but because if not us, then who? And if we can encourage others to come along, that would be, uh, a, a very good thing. As far as next steps, uh, I mean, my personal recommendations would be, um, because this started with a letter from Senator Cordman, and because Senator, Senator Cordman has lamented online several times since that letter that was written in July, despite the fact that we were having these sessions almost week after week after week until now, that he hasn't heard from the city. Um, so, I think a big bullet point to do on the to-do list is invite Senator Cordman in and present him with our written findings, which this draft is the beginning of. Um, not necessarily what we're going to do or what we're gonna, we want everybody else to do, but just here are our findings, um, and we look forward, in my opinion, we look forward to partnering with the Senator on figuring out funding and legislation and cooperation and everything else needs to come along to get those things done. Um, and I mentioned a meeting with the Senator specifically because, quite frankly, I think it's be difficult to have the entire delegation, they only actually come together once a year here in the county, and that happens to be coming up on November twentieth, which is, you know, post-election, pre-swearing in for us. Um, and they, they get together, and as you all know, they, they have a kind of a marathon day, and they bring every municipality in the county and every organization that wants to talk to them, they, everybody has to go to them. And so, um, I would encourage that we not dominate our time with the delegation with this, but definitely present the findings, um, at that time as well. Uh, and maybe even the legislative actions that we feel, um, somebody should take, whether they're our issues, um, or others. Um, and then, um, I also feel like, uh, there was a discussion about, you know, conversation with the county. I think we've only had one joint city council, mayor and council meeting, joint meeting with the county commissioners, that was in January, at least, I should say during my time here on the council. The one was in Jan, I don't think there was another one since then this year.
In January.
So, asking for one, you know, eleven months later, ten or eleven months later is, I don't think, out of the question. Um, I would, knowing that the agendas are probably already set on both the mayor and council as well as the county commissioners, for October, I would suggest maybe early November, mid-November, uh, and invite, we were there last time, invite them here this time, um, you know, to have these discussions. Um, for me personally, the whole thing was very enlightening, I think those were the sentiments that you all were trying to say as well. Um, I formed some new friendships out of it, which were surprising, I guess, uh, to me, um, which I think is good, uh, to, to create those, you know, relationships, whereas I said before, they were kinda just silos. Um, yeah, but the la, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, since I have the floor, is that unfortunately, and, and that's a low understatement, but unfortunately, there are those out there, some of them running for the, these seats, uh, who have taken the implications kinda surrounding this whole situation, including, you know, starting with the Senator's letter, um, to, uh, un, incorrectly, um, characterize, uh, Hagerstown. Um, you know, Hagerstown is not under siege, we do not defund the police. Um, you know, there's not, the, there's crime, there's crime in every, there's crime across the country, in every state, in every county, in every city, in every town, and in every hamlet, there is crime. Our job is to make sure that those crimes are addressed. And I think our Hagerstown Police Department does an excellent job at doing that. So, those that are out there spreading, really, I mean, I don't know what else to call it. You know, we've, we've been polite for years, they call it misinformation, there was a term came up that a couple of years ago called alternative facts, I'm just gonna call them lies, because that's what they are. And I think the folks at home should understand, that when they see these kinds of things on Facebook, they're just being lied to. And I hope that those same folks at home that are listening to my words right now have listened for the last ten weeks or so and have taken all this in themselves. So, with that, um, you know, I would, I would encourage the city, this council, mayor and council, to continue to take the high road, um, as we have done, and I think good things have come from it, so, thank you.
I think we're all on the same page as far as, like, steps forward, um, with one, what you've mentioned with the Senator, would it be possible to take the letter, if he's saying that he's not listening, or he's not, he isn't hearing anything from us, and address it in a letter and just send it to him with our findings, rather than, because I think it, it delays the, it delays the response to what, like, just to bring him in and talk about it, like, we send a letter drafted that's signed by all of us, and, you know, with the, with what you have discovered and broken down and what you have, you know, summarized here with our findings, rather than a, a face-to-face, because I think that there will be an opportunity for us to, for he and the delegate and the county and whomever. Because I do agree that the letter needs responded to, and I feel that it was only fair for us to wait this long to respond to it, to get all of the data that we needed and to understand what we were responding to with as much information as possible. So, I would, I agree that we should respond, I would like to see it in letter form, um, that we all agree on, because I think now's the time for us to say, okay, here we are, we understand, and here's what we found, and we'd like to talk to you in order to create an action plan in the future. That's just mine.
I mean, those two things are not mutually exclusive.
I'd say we do both.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, that the letter says, we invite, you know, like, we, the plan is to talk about this, and so, it's in.
Yeah, I agree.
There, Councilmember Alshire agrees.
Who's left the building?
Twenty, twenty-nine years.
So, a, a letter of response to the Senator, and then a request of the county for a joint meeting to talk about, and how we can work together.
And that the next administration, like Councilmember Prey said, you know, that when they, they go to the delegation, because they will go, right?
No.
Oh, we would.
It'll be five days before the swearing-in.
It will be our fourth.
Our fourth episode?
Yeah, I didn't wanna say it.
No. It's our episode. Oh, so we, okay, okay, so it'll be our administration that goes, oh, okay.
I didn't wanna say episode.
It's my episode.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that, and we summarize it, and, you know, because that will be their main concern, like, what are you doing, city? What's wrong with your town? You know, and we can address, here's what we're doing, or here's our, what we found.
And, and I think, if, if possible, Scott or Wes or whoever would be helping us craft this together, if we could kinda break it down into things that like, hey, we know these are things that either we can try to work toward, or that we've worked on, these are things we could use the county's assistance with, these are things that we could use our delegation's assistance with. If we could frame it in that way, then it makes it a little easier to digest, I think, uh, or at least press up. Be, uh, uh, what's, what's the word you used, uh, Councilmember Brini, not to tie up all their time, but to, to give them a, a more concise...
Yeah, not to occupy all their time.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think that that's the, basically, the only way to do it.
I still invite the Senator only because he hasn't asked to be invited. I mean, at some point, I would suggest...
At some point, right, I think that, I think that it is important that there is an invitation extended.
He is our Senator.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And he will need to be the one advocating, maybe...
At some point.
At some point, and we can, yeah.
And, and this will also, the, the list or the, the letter can also help us to pull ourselves accountable, you know, with making sure that we, we tackle these and so they don't get, you know, fall under the cracks and so there's another fire in, in the works. Um, and, and again, for the next administration, if, if they wanna use some of these ideas or, or goals to tackle for their next, uh, term.
Yeah, yeah. I think that, um, the letter and the invites, um, absolutely, because, uh, I, and I think it's a clear way to, uh, compile everything for the community that may have only read the letter and did not, um, invest in watching any of the episodes, um, the last ten weeks, and so that'd be a good way to kinda address those things, so, yeah.
And I have to say, you know, around this table, um, as much as the letter, you know, fueled a lot of emotion in the beginning, thank you, Senator Cordman. I mean, thank you for, you know, just making it more, making it public, making, you know, calling us to the carpet, you know, calling the city to the carpet, calling the county, calling all of us, and, and because all of our citizens and the people that we represent are very concerned, and we live here too, just like we've said, and so does he, and, uh, and so, thank you for making us and insisting that this, insisting these conversations take place, and I'm, like I've said before, it's long overdue, they're long overdue, and I am really happy that these conversations are gonna continue and that there will hopefully be action take, to take place, and that we can, you know, bring our community back to a healthy, healthy space.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Yeah, so, shout out to Wes, though, on Facebook, with taking the snippets of each of the quote episodes and sharing them.
Yeah.
It's really helpful.
That's where these came from, so, yeah.
Really great.
Thank you, Wes. Yeah. Good?
Yeah.
All right, city administrator.
All right, uh, just a couple of things, uh, Hager House and City Park Ghost Tours are Friday and Saturday, uh, seven and eight PM, October eleventh, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-fifth, and also Community Yard Sale, the annual fall community yard sale on Saturday, October twelfth, seven AM to two PM, and the Harvest Sow Down is also at Fairgrounds Park, Saturday, October twelfth, eleven AM to three PM. Uh, want to, uh, just publicly thank, uh, uh, Maryland Municipal League, uh, for inviting myself, and I'm sure Councilman Prey will mention it too, to the White House complex last week to discuss, uh, the Inflation Reduction Act and cybersecurity, uh, concerns, uh, and giving us a briefing on that, a lot of, uh, good information we got, uh, we, uh, we got, I got out of that. Um, and, uh, great opportunity to be able to kinda hang out, uh, in the Executive Office Building and, and, uh, see all the MML folk and, and, uh, it's a good time. That's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Mac. I think I had, like, said mine before, so, I'm glad.
Did you?
Yeah, I feel like I said...
Oh, that was your closing comment.
Yeah, I mean, what else am I gonna say? This is good, I'm good.
It's a very pretty.
Thank you, Administrator, for mentioning that visit, I won't delay that, uh, but I will do a, uh, after-action report, there was a lot of information. I just wanted to say, I handed out to each of you, uh, one of these postcards, um, there's an art exposition coming up starting on Saturday called Civil Rights, Civil Wrongs at the, uh, gallery on Forty Seventh Avenue, um, with an opening reception on Saturday starting at one o'clock, I think I'm gonna be there around one o'clock or so, a little after, um, so, I would encourage you guys to attend if you have free time, thank you.
Councilwoman Brin.
Yesterday was the, um, public hearing for the Hagerstown Lake Department's electric rate, um, proposal, uh, case number nine seven four four. It was held here yesterday, and there were four citizens that showed up to provide public comments, and one of the, one of the gentlemen's that, that spoke said that, you know, they didn't know about the hearing, um, at all, they actually came to City Hall to take care of permit matters and saw the sign on a door and inquired about it, and, um, another, um, person that spoke up said that she was invited because the other woman in, in the gallery here told her about it, and, um, the judge... And the judge, Judge Jennifer Grace, she was here yesterday. She presiding over the case. She encouraged, and this is also live stream on Facebook, that's how I watched it this morning, but she suggested that everyone provide their comments, written comments, to the Maryland, some agency called, hold on, the Maryland Public Service Commission by October eleventh. You can do it electronically, or you can mail it. All that to say is that there was a Facebook post on our city's Facebook page on August, August twenty-second about this hearing. The Light Department also shared on Facebook about the hearing. There was a sign in front of City Hall, but I'm, I'm just thinking that we should do a better job with promoting when there are hearings. And there was also a snippet in the Herald Mail, which, you know, if you don't pay for Herald Mail, sometimes you don't, you don't wear it. So, if there's a way that, even if there's, you know, when we send out bills, I know a lot of people want electronic bills now, but if there's mail bills, that we can have, like, flyers, or some type of messaging in the, the bottom of the bill to say, hey, heads up, there's a, there's a public hearing on electric. I think that'll be very helpful, because I know that, you know, we as a body, we do a good job with trying to tell as many people as possible about what, what's going on, and for awareness and for transparency, but I still think we're still missing a geographic group of people that aren't aware, because they're not on social media, they don't have Herald Mail. We don't have a news, you know, publication, so I think that we have to be creative with finding ways to make sure that people are aware to provide their comments.
Yeah, and, and I would just say, you know, the PSC put out a press release, there were multiple, the, the, we boosted the social media posts at least twice to try to get it out to as many people as we can. You know, empty seat over here, news media has become pretty much non-existent when it's come to our meetings. I think this is how they get most of their, most of their information to write their stories, is, is through watching the YouTube. So, it, it has been extremely difficult to, and, and social media, people read on social media, you know, the things that are out there that are, are, you know, alternate facts, those seem to get read all the time, but then when you try to have a meeting and provide the real thing, nobody seems to ever see the, ever see the advertisement, so.
Do we do Instagram too?
Yeah, Instagram and Twitter for X. And the PSC actually has regulations on how these things must be advertised, and over what period of time, and where they actually show up. So, we had to buy, buy all of those rules in terms of getting that information out, and I believe there was also a slide on the cable channel. Yeah, I mean, aside from maybe putting something in bills, like you said, I don't, not sure if that happened, but I think we did everything else that was possible. I'm not sure we're allowed to do that through the PSC. Yeah, I, I, I don't know that, to be sure. I just know that, you know, we followed the regulations that they established. Because this was a PSC meeting, not a city meeting.
Right, but a P A C.
PSC.
P S C, is that, is that like a state?
Public Service Commission is a state.
So, is that something that we can champion to change, since we're talking about legislation?
It could be. I, we have to look into it.
I remember.
Like with, uh, what's constant yield notice, how that's advertised in the newspaper.
Remember at MML?
Specific ways to do it.
Remember at MML, when, when the gentleman spoke about the public.
That was a discussion in MML about the public notices.
Public notice.
There, there should be a reform in that, because right now, it's, you know, the little postage stamp on the back of the newspaper.
And it costs about five hundred bucks.
And, of course, the newspaper is supply and demand, right? They're, they're
Absolutely.
gonna get the money they can out of those tiny little notices, but there should be a more modern way to, to be the acceptable state way to, to send out public notices, right?
Yeah, I mean.
PSC doesn't want, they, they're, they want to raise the rates, so they don't want a bunch of people coming in to show up and talk.
Yeah, I mean, just, just because something's been done a certain way, as you said, Councilmember forever and ever, doesn't mean that that's the best way to do it, especially in today's world, but I, you know, I, I, I think we, we, we tried to get that information out on all platforms available to us, as best we could. I think this, this happens very often with things, and it's unfortunate when it's something that's this important, so I certainly understand where you're coming from.
Well, that's that creative thinking outside the box, if we can help change that, so everybody can be more aware of what's going on here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schindler?
All right, well, I'll tackle onto two things that have already been mentioned here. One, one is technology, because that's kind of my, you know, that's my thing, and that is the, the Reach Resource Guide that we were given for the, the homeless resources. Can we make sure that goes up on the website? I, I tried to find that today and couldn't, so if, if it's possible, that'd be awesome. Okay, that'd be great. That way we can easily link people to it and provide it, to make it really easy to distribute.
That was the goal, and that was not lost.
Thank you. And then the other thing I'll tackle onto is something that Councilmember Preney mentioned, and that's artwork. Thank you for this. I'll try to check this out, this is great. But I also want to just mention, I, I, I sat and I had lunch at the House of Kobe, and, and this is gonna sound off the wall, but I looked around, and I'd say half of the artwork on the walls is actually at our Washington County Museum of Fine Arts right now. How, I got goosebumps, man, just sitting there. How cool is that? So I hope that people go and check that out. That is so awesome. And, and I also just wanted to say again, if you haven't seen the public art downtown, the murals, those are so awesome. Now there's the QR code that the, one of them's interactive. You can get on with your Instagram and, and actually solve the slide puzzle, and I believe there's a contest going on for that right now, so that's really cool. And I wanted to actually ask, I, I saw that we have that, is there any, I don't know, Scott, this might be more for you. Are there any plans to make a more permanent ability to display that QR code, so that that artwork will continue to be interactive? Right now, I, I know that the yard sign with the weather and everything else might end up going away, or wear off, or, or something like that, and it'd be nice to be able to preserve that.
Okay. Done it yet?
No, no, I'm, I'm hoping to go out there. I'm excited, yeah.
This place was so crowded when I came in, with all the warthogs here. But one other thing too, Eric Hastings put together a tremendous video. He interviewed each of the muralists, and it is a very cool video. I think it's about five and a half minutes long or so. It's on our Facebook page, I believe YouTube, and so anybody who wants to go look at that, I think it's very insightful, because you get a, a flavor of where all of these muralists come from, and how they interpreted Hagerstown and what they did. So it's certainly worth, worth watching. Right. And our community engagement officer just said yes.
Thank you to her, all the hard work. Thank you to Wes, Scott.
Madam Mayor and everyone, so, thank you.
All right. But I want to say, thank you for the Maryland Municipal League's, a visit yesterday. There was three mayors here. We had the Mayor Frederick, Mayor Michael O'Connor, the Mayor of Galena, Town of Galena, Mayor John Carroll, and then we had also, oh my goodness, I'm gonna forget what municipality, but we had Mayor Selina, oh my goodness, she, I've always just called her Mayor Selina, me and her, and Councilwoman Burnett, kind of, we all connected on that very first MML Summer League. I mean, look, Summer League, Summer Conference, Summer Conference. Just having them here in that walk around and, and being able to show them downtown Hagerstown was awesome. The executive director from Maryland Municipal League as well, and some of their staff. And then, what an amazing thing to have Tamara Dolman, who is now working with Maryland Municipal League, be with that team as we, you know, gave a tour. That was really cool. I wanted to say thank you to the Robert W. Johnson Community Senator last week. EJ, Executive Director, opened his doors to host a meeting, and the meeting was done through the state with three secretaries from the state, and they're not ready to, you know, publicly talk about the initiative, but they're already on it. They have a mighty, mighty dynamic work team together, and actually, we have one of our former youth council members is a part of that, as well as another young lady that is youth, and so they've included the youth. The state has done an impeccable job connecting and, and getting folks from within our area to kind of work together on this work group. And I want to say thank you to EJ again, and again, and again, to host that there, and to kind of reopen those doors, to kind of invite folks in, to kind of talk about a lot of different things, and how they can address them. They did kick the elected officials out right after, and they also kicked out any of the directors that were from this area, and they wanted to keep it very, you know, very community and our leadership base, and there was, there was some heavy hitters in there. I mean, I'm not gonna name any, I'll just say that there was some folks that are just action, and to see folks like Deidre Norris and Adi Nardi, and then also Jerry, who does Trinity Lutheran Church, but also, bless you, gatekeepers. It was just incredible. It, it's incredible, and I'm really excited for whenever the state rolls this out, and how they roll it out, and how they kind of make it a public thing of what they're bringing into, into our community, and I think that it's a great, it'd be a great place for Envy, to kind of be a part of what your vision is and, and that kind of thing. I think it's gonna be amazing. Yeah, that, that was just, it was dynamic. Valley Assembly of God actually reached out and had about a special recognition for a Royal Ranger. Are you guys familiar with the Royal Ranger program? Yeah, me neither. I learned that the Royal Rangers is kind of like the Boy Scouts, but it is through the Christian faith community. They have an incredible amount of work to do in order to be able to get this, to be a gold member and to get the white hat. And the white hat actually has like the number that is, you know, of the Royal Rangers, which was, I, I was blown away. This young man, Evan Sisler, who the youth pastor called him Sizzling Sisler, has done all of this work, and it's not like a four-year plan. This is something you start at like this, and then you work up, and I mean, I was sitting there, also, some of our colleagues, Delegate Valentine, as well as Delegate Vival were there. I mean, it was incredible. We felt, we felt, as elected officials, like, you know, like slackers, hearing how much service, how much faith and honor this young man and his family had to do for the last couple of years. So congratulations, Evan, but one of the most impactful things for me was when I walked in, and I'm gonna, maybe Captain in the back can help me with this. Officer Atha was her name whenever she got sworn in. She just got married. Rommsburg. What'd you say that again? Rommsburg. So Officer Rommsburg, who has newly, just got married, right after getting sworn in last year, and her entire family are a part of this, this church. Her brother is ten years, he got the, the gold medal in the, the white hat, so he was a part of the, the ceremony. She presented Evan with a United States flag, as well as a letter directly from the Chief of Police. A sheriff was there and actually presented a county flag, as well as some words. Our delegate and Senator actually sent citations and, and personal words as well, so it's a big, it's a big thing, a Royal Ranger. It was, it was incredible. The, the presentation of colors, I mean, just how much work and how many men wrapped their arms around. And there's a, there's a, a girls' group as well, but this was specifically the, the court for that. It was just incredible. Food was great. I got to sit with some great people, and I got to sit with Officer Rommsberger and her family, and her mom actually works for the city as well, and so, again, I think there's great things happening. It's all around, like, how do you find out about it? How do you connect to it? And who, you know, how do you know about it? So thank, thank you to that family for reaching out. I had no idea. I just went and wanted to give, you know, be there to recognize them when I learned. I was like, oh my God, this is incredible. We have quite a few young men that have climbed these ranks, and you have to do it before you're eighteen. And so I asked Evan, what was the most difficult thing, and it was probably staying committed, is what he said. I'm gonna say, run for re-entry on Saturday was an amazing turnout. It was the, probably the biggest turnout for Hagerstown, and it's difficult to get, we do kind of try to compete to get a lot of folks at the locations, but it is seven-thirty in the morning for, for us here in Washington County, where Frederick is, Lurk gets, she runs the twenty miles within about four and a half hours, so she makes it to Frederick around lunchtime. But just incredible. Delegate Grossman was out there on Saturday, seven-thirty in the morning in Bill, and a bunch of gatekeepers were out rallying, and it was just incredible. It's just wild that she takes off running, the delegate, and, and literally, she ran fifty miles on, on Saturday in order to raise money for folks that family may not have the money to get here to be able to have the conversations at the table, and then that way, community mediation actually pays for their transportation, no matter how many times they need to get back and forth. So she, she, she always says, I, this is the easy work. Running seventy miles is the easy work, because the difficult conversations folks have to have at the table with their lone ones is the hard work. I want to read this about difficult conversations. I was just, I'm gonna, this book was delivered to me, because I'm gonna be facilitating and helping with conflict resolution in the winter conference, and so this is just an excerpt. Difficult conversations are a normal part of life. Part of life. No matter how good you get, difficult conversations will always challenge you. What we, we know what it feels like to be deeply afraid of hurting someone or of getting hurt. We know what it means to be consumed by guilt for how our actions have affected others, or how we have let others down. We know that even with the best intentions, human relationships can corrode or become tangled, and if we are honest, we also know that we also don't always have the best of intentions. We know just how fragile our heart and the soul are, so it is best to keep your goals realistic. Eliminating fear and anxiety is an unrealistic goal. Reducing fear and anxiety and learning how to manage that which remains are more attainable. Achieving perfect results with no, with no risk will not happen. Getting better results in the face of tolerable odds might. And that, for the most of us, is good enough, for if we are fragile, we are also remarkably resilient. And I say that a lot of things that we have to do in this work is have difficult conversations. And again, I, I'm open to them. I prefer to have them in my face versus behind my back, and with that, we're adjourned.